Okay, folks, welcome everyone. My name is Mike Terry. I'd like to welcome everyone to this regular monthly meeting of the Planning Commission. This is a little different meeting than we normally have. We normally have it early in the morning. This is 7:00 PM in the afternoon or in the evening. And there's no zoning that will be heard or considered tonight at all. This is for us to discuss and consider possible changes to our comprehensive plan. Just so everyone understands, Georgia law requires every county in the state to have a comprehensive plan that sets forth a framework for development and for comprehensive planning as that county goes forward. Cobb County reviews this plan during each year, and then we present any suggested changes to the public at two separate hearings, one that we oversee, and that's tonight. The next one will also be this month, January the 17th, again in this chamber, and that'll be conducted by the Board of Commissioners. Changes that we will hear tonight are those that we will consider are those that are the result of the Board of Commissioner making suggestions due to zoning changes that occurred, also from studies or master plans that have been completed from the Planning Commission, from residents, or from business leaders. And so we'll hear some from many of those different areas tonight. This hearing is different from our regular hearing, as I mentioned, because we do not hear any zonings, that we're not talking about zonings tonight. So no zoning cases will be considered. Therefore, we will dispense with some of our usual procedures, where there will be no opening prayer. People are not sworn in. And speakers that do desire to come and speak to us, because this is a public hearing, are given three minutes to speak, and that's all, three minutes. So be mindful of that. Each proposal will be read into the record individually. We'll get into that in just a moment. And at that point, after each one is read, I will ask if there's anyone present that wishes to address that particular suggestion. If there is, we will pull that, and we will hear it separately after we've heard all the others. And that's how that will go. All proposals that are not objected to will be voted on together and voted into the system. Planning Commissioners can also offer suggestions and changes as we get into this. Now, we have discovered that there were a few errors in the book that was posted online, nothing very major, but as we get to each one of those, Jason Gaines, who's here with us, is going to discuss that so that we can handle that as each one comes up. Jason, do you have any further instructions for us tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, well, then I'd ask everybody to please turn off your cell phones, or at least put them on silent or vibrate, because they do interfere with our broadcast tonight. So if you would do that for us, then I guess we're ready to go. Jason, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what we have tonight?
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm Jason Gaines. I'm the Planning Division Manager for Cobb County Community Development Agency. And as Chairman Terry explained, this is our annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment Meeting. We have three types of Comprehensive Plan Amendments that we consider as part of this process. We have the zoning decisions, or ZDs, which directly result from rezoning cases that have occurred over the past year, where the approved zoning is in conflict with the future land use map category for the property or properties in question. Then you also have commission proposals, which are items that come forward as a result of conversations between the staff and the Commissioners individually, and we bring those forward per district. And then we also have staff proposals, which are typically a variety of things. Typically, it involves future land use category cleanups on the future land use map, things that kind of got overlooked in the past, and then we go back and discover them and clean them up, or the maintenance of, say, the redevelopment inventory, or the list of master plans and studies, things of that nature. That's what staff proposals typically consist of. So you have your ZDs, CPs, and SPs. And before we get into the ZDs, I want to make everyone aware of the last item in the ZD list, which is ZD 19. That item has been withdrawn. ZD 19 was based on zoning case Z40 of 2016 in Commission District 4. It's on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Lake Shore Drive, at 380 Veterans Memorial Highway. That item was withdrawn because the parcels that were subject to the rezoning were different as it was finalized versus what it was when the application first came in. So the amending of the future land use category was no longer a needed task. So that item, ZD 19, has been withdrawn.
Okay, whenever you're ready, let's just start with ZDs and get them read into the record.
All right. We'll start with ZD 1. ZD 1 was based on zoning case Z59 of 2015 in Commission District 4. The proposed change was from Neighborhood Activity Center, NAC, to Industrial Compatible, IC, located on the southwest side, excuse me, of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Pebblebrook Road.
Okay, that's ZD 1. Is there anyone here in opposition to or wishing to speak to ZD 1? Okay, we have one person. Gault, this is in District 4, and I know we do have one map revision on this as well. Is that correct?
On this one, it was discovered that there's an error in the map in the book. It currently shows more area than what was actually zoned. So I think the staff has prepared a corrected map for that. There we go. So now it will just be the area outlined in yellow on this that we would be considering the change for.
Okay, we did have one person from Mableton Improvement Coalition. Does that answer your question? Do you still need to discuss it? Okay, so we need to pull that one, then, Jason, and we'll discuss it later.
All right. ZD 2 is in Commission District 4 as well, based on zoning case Z82 of 2015. The proposed change is from Low Density Residential, or LDR, to Medium Density Residential, or MDR, located on the north side of Church Road, east of Northern Circle, at 167 Church Road.
Okay, that's ZD 2. Any person here wishing to speak to ZD 2 or in opposition to ZD 2? Cannot see and hearing any. Did you have a correction on that one?
There is a correction in the notes, not in the map, but the density was calculated incorrectly on this one. So I'd like to pull that one so we can discuss that later.
Okay, so we're going to pull ZD 2. Okay. Okay, Jason?
All right. ZD 3 is also in Commission District 4, based on case Z85 of 2015. Proposed changes from Neighborhood Activity Center to Industrial, located on the west side of Allstel Road, south, in the south side of Pear Road, at 3200 Allstel Road.
Okay, anyone here in opposition to or wishing to speak to ZD 3? Cannot see and hearing any. This is also in District 4. Gault, did you have any comments on that one?
Yeah, this is another one where the map's showing more than what was actually zoned, so I think the staff has provided a corrected map, but there it shows the corrected zoning that took place, and that's all we would be considering. But I'd like to pull that one for further discussion.
All right, so we'll pull ZD 3 and discuss it a little later. Okay, Jason?
Okay. ZD 4 is in Commission District 4, based on case Z93 of 2015. Proposed change from Low Density Residential, LDR, to Neighborhood Activity Center, NAC, located on the north side of Patmel Road, east of Dink Lane. And just for note, with the redrawn Commission District boundaries, this area is now in Commission District 1, but at the time of this exercise, or these reviews, it was in Commission District 4.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 4? Okay, Gault, you're on the roll here. This is also yours. Any comments?
We're good with this one.
Okay, so this one will stay for us to vote on just a little bit later, okay?
Okay, moving on to ZD 5. City Commission District 1, based on zoning case Z94 of 2015. Proposed change is from Very Low Density Residential, or VLDR, to VLDR and Neighborhood Activity Center, NAC, located on the northwest corner of Macklin and Villa Rica Roads.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 5? Okay, we have one person wishing to speak to that, and I believe this, Skip, this is yours, correct?
Yes, it is.
Any further comments? We're going to pull this one anyway.
No, I'd like to hear the conversation.
Okay, we're going to pull this one, so we'll hear this one a little bit later. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
ZD 6 is in Commission District 4, based on case Z99 of 2015. Proposed changes from Neighborhood Activity Center to Low Density Residential, located on the southwest side of Bankstone Drive, the north side of Horseshoe Bend Road, at 2790 Bankstone Drive Southwest.
Okay, anyone here in opposition to ZD 6? Cannot see and hearing anybody. Again, this is Ms. Porter's Gault.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that one.
Okay, so we're going to discuss that one a little later. So we'll pull ZD 6. Okay, Jason?
ZD 7 is in Commission District 1, based on case Z104 of 2015. Proposed change is from Medium Density Residential to High Density Residential, located on the northeast corner of Sandtown Road and Osborne Road. And at the western terminus of Pear Street, note that with the Commission District boundary changes, this is now in Commission District 3. But again, for the purposes of this exercise, it is in Commission District 1.
Okay, this is ZD 7. Anyone wishing to speak to ZD 7? Not seeing and hearing anybody. Skip, this is yours. You okay with this one?
Yes, I'm fine with this.
Okay, so we have another one for approval. Okay, ZD 7. Okay, Jason?
Okay, with ZD 8, we are in Commission District 4. This is based on zoning case Z80 of 2015. The proposed change is from Community Activity Center, Medium Density Residential, and Mableton Town Center to Public and Institutional. This is located at the south, on the southwest side of Mableton Parkway, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the north side of Glor Circle. The two parcel addresses are 5600 Glor Circle and 827 Wood Valley Road.
Okay, ZD 8. Anyone here for ZD 8? Cannot see and hearing anybody. This is Gault's. Any further comments?
Okay, this is one that there is a corrected map for. Discovered that, you'll see there's a little sliver of red over on the left-hand side, and in the corrected map, it's now included, which should have been included. Other than that, we're fine with this one, but I do want to add a clerk's note to ask staff to look at the remaining Community Activity Center along Wood Valley Road next year as part of this, because now we have a couple little areas that don't seem to fit anymore.
Okay. We added that as a text amendment, Debbie, or is that just a clerk's note?
Clerk's note, yeah.
Just a clerk's note?
Correct.
Okay. Can we leave that one on as we are calling it our consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, since no one was in objection to that, then that's what we'll do. So we're adding...
And that will be with the corrected map.
Right, ZD 8 with the new map. Okay. Okay, Jason?
All right. ZD 9 is in Commission District 4. It's based on case Z2 of 2016. The proposed change is from Community Activity Center to Low Density Residential. It's located on the east side of Reed Drive, north of Hurt Road.
Okay, anyone here in opposition or wishing to speak to ZD 9? Gault, I believe this one's yours as well.
Yeah, we'd like to pull that for further discussion.
Okay, so we'll pull ZD 9, talk about it a little bit later. Okay, Jason, go ahead.
ZD 10 is in Commission District 1. It's based on case Z102 of 2015. The proposed change is from Very Low Density Residential to Community Activity Center, and it's located on the northwest side of Morris Hill Road, northeast of Brookstone Drive, at 1979 Morris Hill Road.
Okay, that is ZD 10. Anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 10? Cannot see and hearing anyone. This is Skip. I believe this one is yours. Are you okay with this one?
Yes, I'm fine with this one.
Okay, so we'll add this one to our ones not objected to. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
ZD 11 is in Commission District 1 as well. It's based on case Z23 of 2016. The proposed change is from Rural Residential to Medium Density Residential, located on the west side of Morris Hill Road, south of Morris Hill Church Road.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 11? Okay, we have one person, so that one would need to be pulled. Skip, I believe you were going to pull that one anyway.
I was going to pull it anyway, so that's good.
Okay, so we'll pull that, discuss it a little bit later. Okay, ZD 11 pulled. Go ahead, Jason.
ZD 12 is located in Commission District 2. It's based on case Z87 of 2015. The proposed change is from Public and Institutional to Regional Activity Center with a subcategory of High Density Residential, located on the west side of Spring Hill Parkway, the north side of Paces Ferry Road, the east side of Spring Hill Road, and the southwest side of Simpson Road.
Okay, that is in District 2, and that's mine. There is a correction on this one as well. The acreage was listed at just over 15 acres, and actually, it's just over 6. So if we can make that one correction. Anyone here for ZD 12? Okay, since there's no one here, if we can make that one correction, I think we're fine to go ahead with that one.
All right. ZD 13 is in Commission District 2 as well. It's based on zoning case Z6 of 2016. The proposed change is from Low Density Residential and Medium Density Residential to Medium Density Residential in its entirety, properties located on the north side of Lee Road, east of Atlanta Road.
Anyone here for ZD 13? Cannot see and hearing anyone. This is also in District 2. I think this is correct as well, so I'll move that through for approval. ZD 13, okay. Next?
Next is ZD 14, and it's in Commission District 4. It's based on case Z14 of 2016. Proposed change is from Neighborhood Activity Center to Industrial Compatible, located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of North Island Road.
Anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 14? We have one person. Gault, I believe you were going to pull it as well?
Yes, I wanted to pull it.
So we're going to pull that one and discuss it a little bit later, ZD 14. Okay, Jason?
ZD 15 is in Commission District 2, based on zoning case Z32 of 2016. Proposed change is from Low Density Residential and Community Activity Center to High Density Residential, located on the east side of La Croix Drive, north side of Robinson Road. Addresses are 810 and 820 La Croix Drive. There's also a proposed text amendment to accompany this ZD item.
Okay, anyone here for ZD 15? Okay, that's also in District 2. That's mine. I'd like to pull that one for discussion. A couple of corrections we need to make on that, so we'll pull that one, okay?
Okay. ZD 16 is in Commission District 4. It's based on case Z45 of 2016. Proposed changes from Neighborhood Activity Center to Medium Density Residential in Neighborhood Activity Center, properties located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Davis Drive, and south of Spring Road, the address of 1722 Veterans Memorial Highway.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 16? Okay, Gault, I believe this...
Yeah, I think this change is fine, but I'd like to add a clerk's note to ask staff to take a look at other properties on Spring Road to see if they should have a future land use change for next year.
Okay, so we can do that and still leave it on the approved list. Okay, so ZD 16 added to the not objected to list. And the clerk's note, you want to, you're just adding it? Say again what your clerk's note is. Let's be sure we get that.
It's requesting that staff look at other properties on Spring Road to see if they should have a change in their future land use.
Okay, good. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
All right. Excuse me. Z17 is in Commission District 3. It's based on case Z64 of 2016. The proposed change is from Community Activity Center to High Density Residential. The property is located on the west side of Shiloh Road, south of Bent Ridge Drive. With the new Commission District boundaries, this item or this case is located in Commission District 1, but for the purposes of this exercise, it is Commission District 3.
Okay, ZD 17. Anyone here for ZD 17? Not seeing and hearing any. This is in Christie's District, in Communes, Christie.
No, this one's fine.
Okay, so we're going to put ZD 17 on the list for acceptance. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
And ZD 18 is in Commission District 2, based on case Z63 of 2016. Proposed changes from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential. Property is located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lake Real Court. The address is 1668 Johnson Ferry Road.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 18? Okay, that's in my district, and I do have a couple of issues with that, so I'd like to pull that one. We'll discuss it a little later. Okay, we have one more, don't we? ZD 19? Oh, 19 was withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wrote them down too, and I'm going to read them into the record. I hope somebody followed along. Be sure that we have this right. I have ZD 4, 7, 8, 10, 12, 13, 16, and 17 not objected to. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Jason?
Yes, sir.
All right, I would entertain a motion then to accept those, pass them through to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration.
I make a motion that we approve.
Can you read them again if you want to?
Well, I did reverse. I wrote the ones that we pulled, so I...
Same ones?
Same way, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve what we're calling the carcinogen of the ZDs, with the exception of 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 9, 11, 14, 15, and 18.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll register your vote, please. And that is approved 5-0. Okay, now we're going to move into CPs, I believe. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Let's go back to the ones we did have to pull and see what kind of discussion we have. Let's see here. Okay, Jason, ZD 1. Do we need Jason to go over that again, or can we just start our discussion? You've already read it into the record. Okay, if anyone was here for ZD 1, is that right? Anyone here for ZD 1? If not, Gault, I believe you're going to take the lead on this. We do. Okay, come on up. We have three minutes allowed for each speaker. Just give us your name.
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the, a board member of the Mableton Improvement Coalition and Chair of the Zoning Committee. We are opposed to this proposed change from NAC to IC. The zoning decision that triggered this was a compromise to accommodate an existing business that needed to expand, and is an exception to the area's trends, which are towards more consumer-oriented, neighborhood-supportive-type uses. For many years, the future land use map in this area has reflected the change from the old industrial emphasis to more neighborhood and consumer-friendly commercial uses. And that trend should not be changed or undermined or redirected by this one zoning case, which was not really a change in direction, but simply a change to accommodate a particular situation. Adopting this amendment would create an island of IC, future land use category, in a nearly two-mile segment of Veterans Memorial Highway, where we have presently NRC and MDR. So we would very much appreciate it if you would recommend to the Board of Commissioners that this change not be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Anyone else? Okay, Gault, this is back to you.
All right, and I think Robin Meyer just said that very well. You know, this is just an addition on to allow an existing building to grow, but it doesn't change the direction, so I think I'd make a motion that we recommend that the Board denies ZD 1.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second from Judy. Any further discussion? Okay, everybody call your vote, and that's the way we'll go 5-0. Okay, Jason, keep me straight here. I believe the next one that we pulled is ZD 2.
Yes, sir.
Anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 2? Okay, no one from the public. Gault, this is also yours. You want to lead our discussion, please?
Yes, I certainly will. This item, the current future land use plan's Low Density Residential, which contemplates densities up to 2.5 units per acre. At the time this was prepared, staff believed it had been increased to 2.7 units per acre, but it actually was zoned at 2.4 units per acre, which is within the current land use plan. Now, the category of zoning of R12 isn't necessarily a valid or a contemplated category for Low Density Residential, but I think the more overriding factor is that it is Low Density Residential density, and it's not medium. So I think we should deny this. So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they deny ZD 2.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Skip, any further discussion, comments? Okay, calling for the vote? Okay, so ZD 2, we're going to deny that one as well, and that passes 5-0. Okay, I believe the next one is ZD 3. Anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 3? Okay, Gault, you get the gold ring again.
Okay, once again, this was one that we had a map change on, and it's only a small sliver that was actually involved in the zoning. And that was just to recognize that this land had traditionally been used as part of this site and had improper zoning for it. It's really not a change in direction, and this is not an area that's contemplated to be an industrial area in the future. So once again, I would say that we should deny this, so I'll make a motion that we recommend denial of this item to the Board of Commissioners.
And the map has been corrected, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a second? Second from Judy. Any further discussion? Okay, please register your vote, and that's the way we'll go 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, I believe 5 is the next one, ZD 5. Anyone here wish to speak to ZD 5?
ZD 4?
No, it wasn't.
No. Okay, we have one person that raised her hand. Why don't you come on up? Give us your name and give us your comments.
My name is Kelly Gambrell. ZD 5 is a rezoning application that was supported by the community and approved in November 2015. In the letter of stipulations, it specifically states that the specified owner intends to utilize the existing residential dwelling, which reflects aesthetically pleasing residential style architecture. His plans are to engage in some interior rehabbing and retrofitting to accommodate an insurance office. Furthermore, the stipulation letter further states that because the fact that the house on the property will be utilized and not demolished, because the utilization of previous pavers instead of impurious asphalt or concrete, and because of the fact that the owner will be disturbing less than 5,000 square feet of property, there were no requirements of stormwater management to install detention on the subject property. The letter of stipulations that were approved also prohibited all permitted uses within the LRO district except for the insurance agency, and additional stipulations were included to ensure the exterior of the home remained residential in nature. The character of the area has not changed based on the zoning decisions and stipulations agreed to by the applicant. Much discussion was also had as to why the requested LRO zoning instead of a SLUP. The reason the applicant had to apply for the LRO zoning was because the language in the SLUP did not allow the end use. Changing the land use designation should not be taken so lightly, given the extensive restrictions the landowner chose to place upon the end use. Therefore, we request that the existing land use designation remained unchanged. Here is a copy for the clerk's letter of stipulations dated October 19, 2015, that were approved. And then several years ago, the county had considered language to the special land use permit section of the code to allow small businesses such as this to be used in a neighborhood without jeopardizing the existing residence. We request that the county once again consider this language to allow small businesses to be located within residential districts, but not require a land use change that could be a springboard for commercial into the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else wishing to speak to ZD 5? Okay, so back to this board. Skip, I believe this is yours. You want to sum it up for us?
Yes. I was going to pull this for exactly the same reasons, and I think, Kelly, you had a very, very nice summary of exactly the reasons for why. I would like to make a recommendation that we recommend denial of this change to the BOC. I think it's clear-cut that that's what needs to be done.
Okay. Do we have a second, Judy? Is that you? Okay, so Judy seconded. Let's call for the vote, and that's the way it'll go 5-0. Thank you very much. Uh, I believe ZD 6 was also pulled as the next one. Anyone here wishing to speak to ZD 6? Okay, not seeing and hearing anyone. Gaunt, I believe this is yours.
Okay, I asked for this to be pulled. This is a case of an historic house that is within, or was zoned within, a RSL, which is residential senior living, but the house itself could not, would not be suitable for seniors. The staircase was very steep, but you couldn't go modifying all these things because it's a historic house built roughly the 1850s. Uh, so we rezoned to allow a family to live in there versus just making it senior living, but it doesn't really change the intention of what we want for the area in that, so I think this one should be turned down. So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to deny ZD 6.
We have a second from Christie. Any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote? Okay, denied 5-0. Okay, thank you, Gaunt. Let's see. ZD 9, I think, is next. Yes, ZD 9. Anyone here wishing to address ZD 9? Okay, this is also Gaunt's. What do you got for us?
Okay, this one was a simple accommodation. Uh, Pasta Bella, which owns the restaurant, I guess just to the east on a couple of lots to this site, needed more space, so they acquired and, and added parking to the back, but there were a couple of houses on this as well that then needed to be rezoned because of what they were doing. Uh, so we rezoned them in recognition so that they could be used as houses, but in the long outlook of things, we would expect this area to become, develop commercially. So doing those two houses, once again, for something that already existed, uh, didn't really change the future planning of this area, so I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners denial of this item.
Okay, recommended denial. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Christie has a second. All in favor, please register your vote. That's denied 5-0. See, that was 9, right? 10 is okay. ZD 11 is next. Anyone here wishing to address ZD 11? Okay, we have one person. You wanna come on up? And again, just for the record, we know who you are, but just for the record, give us your name again.
Um, good evening. My name is Kelly Gambrell. Um, in regards to ZD 11, Cobb County Code, Section 134, 203, in residential senior living, number one specifically states under purpose and intent, the last sentence of the paragraph says, "These uses shall not be established as a precedent for any other residential or non-residential district." The surrounding area is RR and VLDR. This zoning was essentially a spot zoning. Um, also, I believe in the book, and I think, Jason, you and I emailed about this, it was written out medium-density residential, but then in parentheses, it said low-density residential. Beyond that, the RS Code specifically states that it will not set precedent for a residential district. A land use plan change should not be necessary. Therefore, we request that the existing zan, land use designation remain unchanged. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Um, Skip, I guess this is yours, right? You wanna sum it up for us?
Okay, this, this, uh, as Kelly just said, this was a, an RSL, uh, non-supportive RSL. Um, if it's, uh, correct that the code says that we don't need to change the underlying future land use map, then why would we, I'm, I'm gonna ask Jason a question. Why would we even need to make a change then?
Well, to your point, the density itself does fall into MDR range. Uh, the fact that this is an RSL, an RSL supportive, there's a, there's a, uh, the number slipped my, my mind off the top of my head, but there's a higher density cap for an RSL development. So that would be the reason that the change wouldn't be necessitated, per se. If this was anything other than an RSL, then yeah, we'd be looking at this strictly at a, you know, from a density standpoint, but we also have to consider the type of development and the zoning that was granted to it.
Delete it to LDR.
Yeah, it, I, I think the proposal's been made that we delete it to LDR, as Judy says, and, and delete the same, or accomplish the same purpose. Um, and I think that's why maybe there was a typo in the book, that there was some confusion about what it ought to be. I think, I think the, uh, the density of this was, was a little bit over three-point units per acre. Um, but, uh, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with making a motion that we delete it to LDR, to low-density residential. I mean, I really like the idea of keeping it rural residential, but it's never gonna be, it's not gonna be rural residential, uh, for the development that's going in there. It's, it's an RSL. Uh, but on the other hand, we wanna have nice transitions from one future land use parcel to another, and so moving it down to, um, LDR, to me, seems like it makes probably the most sense.
Okay, so your motion is to delete to LDR?
Yeah, my motion would be to recommend to the BOC that we delete it to LDR.
Okay. Second from Judy. Any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote? That's the way we'll go 5-0. Thank you, Skip. ZD 12, I'm sure of. I believe ZD 14, is that the next one, I believe? ZD 14, anyone here wishing to discuss ZD 14? Okay, come on up. And again, give us your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. Um, I'm pretty much gonna say the same thing about ZD 14 that I said about ZD 1, but I really do know that it's a different, uh, different piece of property. Um, we are opposed to this change and would, and would urge you to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that it not be adopted. Um, the, this is another situation in which an accommodation was made related to this property because of the existing building and, um, the need to, um, to try to do something with the 200,000, nearly 200,000-square-foot warehouse, which was, which is located in a neighborhood activity center, but which was zoned OS, and is still zoned OS, uh, but with different stipulations. So if, if this proposal were to be adopted, you would be, uh, creating an island of IC in a two-mile stretch of NAC and MDR, and going in a different direction than actually the zoning went, uh, because the changes in stipulations allowed this property to be, to be used not as a tractor-trailer trucking warehouse, but really as a, to be broken up into smaller spaces to be used for more consumer-oriented and small businesses. Uh, so that the trend with this property, although the zoning category, uh, doesn't reflect that the trend for this property is the trend that our, that our community is headed in, which is supported by the NAC category and not industrial-compatible. So we would urge you to, um, to recommend rejection of this proposed amendment to the future land use map. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Meyer. Anyone else wishing to speak to ZD 14? Okay, back to this board, Gaunt. I believe this is yours. You wanna sum it up for us?
Okay, I think Robin Meyer just did a perfect job of summing up...
I would agree.
...why we should turn it down, so I'll just make a motion that we recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners of ZD 14.
Okay, can I get a second for Gaunt's motion? Give me a second from Skip. That's registered votes. And that's the way we'll go 5-0. Thank you very much. Anyone here wishing to speak to, I believe, ZD 15 is next? Okay, ZD 15 is mine. Um, this was an unusual zoning in that it was an odd-shaped piece of property just off of, uh, Robinson Road, which was just off of Roswell Road. The developer wanted to put in some, some, a few single-family houses and also some townhome condominiums. We wound up, the BOC wound up approving R20 on a little sliver at the top and RA6 at the bottom, so it was a bit unusual, but it's right next to a very large piece of property that we suspect is gonna be in for zoning pretty soon now. Uh, and I think making, um, this MDR due to the density that was finally approved would make more sense. And I believe we talked, uh, before this meeting, a group of us talked about what we would do with the road. I think the road probably should remain LDR, so that's, that's what we need to do. Um, I think is to make this MDR due to the density and then leave the road LDR. And that's how I would suggest that we go. Any further comments, questions on that? Okay, that's, that's gonna be my motion. Then we have a second from Judy. Any further discussion? Uh, register your vote, please. 5-0. Let's see, ZD 16 is okay. I'm sorry, 18 is the next one, that's right. So anyone here for ZD 18? No one here? This is in District 2. I think this needs to remain low-density residential. This is on Johnson's, this is in my district, by the way. This is in my district. It's on, uh, Bishop's. I'm sorry, Johnson's Ferry near Bishop's Lake Road at the church property, and I don't see any reason why we should change this from low-density residential. It's surrounded by low-density residential, and, uh, I, I just, I can't fathom why we would change it. I know why we did initially because of the zoning, but I think it needs to stay low-density residential to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood all around it, so my recommendation is to deny ZD 18. Can I get a second? We have a second to deny. Any further discussion? Everybody register your vote. 5-0 for denial. ZD 19 was withdrawn. Okay, now we can go to the CPs, Jason.
All right. All right, so our next group of items for consideration are the Commissioner proposals. We have a total of four items. We have one in District 1, one in District 3, and two in District 4. Our first item is CP 1-1. Um, the proposal is to include a text amendment with the existing Neighborhood Activity Center. Um, we're located on the south side of Dallas Highway, west of Lost Mountain Road.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to CP 1-1? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. Who's this? Okay, Skip.
I, I agree with this one. Um, we're gonna put, vote on this as a block, right?
Yes. Okay, so propose any changes. So this will be, okay. All right, go ahead, Jason.
Okay, our next item is CP 3-1. Uh, proposal is to go from industrial-compatible and Community Activity Center to high-density residential. We're located on the southeast side of Shiloh Road, east of Royal Drive, and just wanna note that it's on the new district boundaries for Commission Districts. We are now in Commission District 1. For the purposes of this exercise, we are in Commission District 3.
Okay, anyone here for CP 3-1? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. This is in Christie's district. Christie, any comments? Okay, so we're okay with that one as well? Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Next is CP 4-1. We are in Commission District 4, obviously. Um, proposal is from low-density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Uh, this is located on the north side of Pat Mill Road, south of the city of Smyrna. This is associated with, uh, item ZD 4. It's in that same general vicinity.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak to CP 4-1? Not seeing and hearing any. Gaunt, any wrap-up on this one?
I believe there's a revised text amendment you were gonna read in?
Yes, there is, and pull that up. Okay. So it was a proposed text amendment with the initial item, but that, I, that text amendment itself was revised, and I'll read through the whole item and identify the revised part. "In order to provide for a step-down in intensity so as to..." That portion is the revised part. "...mitigate land use conflicts that could arise from small retail uses adjoining residential uses and converting single-family residences to individual commercial uses, the Board of Commissioners has extended the NAC designation along Pat Mill Road. It shall be located north of the city of Smyrna, beginning at the CAC or CAC along South Cobb Drive, extending five lots and portions of two abutting roadways to the west to the city of Smyrna boundary on the north side of Pat Mill Road. Within this area, low-rise office use will be strongly encouraged in order to provide a transition between residential and commercial uses."
Okay, uh, Gaunt, do you have anything to add to that?
Yep, it's fine.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, put that on the list of ones not objected to, but we're adding a revised text amendment, okay? Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, next is CP 4-2. The proposed change is from low-density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center to medium-density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center with a text amendment. Uh, this is located, uh, in the vicinity of the commercial node centered at Floyd and Nickerjack Roads. Um, the, uh, the proposed text amendment is a revision to existing special area guidance that's currently in the comprehensive plan.
So the text amendment we see here is the correct text amendment, correct?
There was, there was not a text amendment included with the item originally. After the book published, we were approached by the Commissioner to, uh, draft up language for a text amendment to, to be addressed here today, and I, that item was included in the memo that was sent out to the Commissioner and Gaunt the date December 21st, okay? And I can read that into the record if you...
We'll, we'll get it in just a moment. Anyone here for CP 4-2? Okay, we do have one person. Robin, you wanna come on up?
Well, I suspect if we read the revised text amendment and show the revised map, it may cover the objection, so why don't, so we may wanna do that first.
We can do that. Jason, you wanna read the text amendment? Can we pull up the revised map?
What's up?
It's up.
Revised map is up, okay? Text amendment for CP 4-2 is as follows. "In order to provide for a step-down in, in intensity so as to mitigate any future land use conflicts between the surrounding residential uses and the commercial uses on the west side of Floyd Road, north of White Boulevard, it is recommended that the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners consider additional and enhanced buffering and screening requirements on any redevelopment or development of the tracks within the NAC future land use category in order to protect adjacent residential uses and provide a transition between land uses."
Okay, um, once again, just for the record, CP 4-2. Anyone wishing to address CP 4-2? Okay, Robin's, Robin raised her hand again. So come on up, Robin.
Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I, I've, was not aware of the text amendment or of the change in the map, so our position is that we are supportive of the change to the medium-density residential category and to the removal of the NAC area along White Boulevard. I'm not 100% certain from what I'm able to see on the screen as to the area that is now NAC and the applicability of the text amendment, which, as I heard Jason read it, sounded as if it spoke to the development of the NAC property, which would now, which, with the zoning case decision over the summer, is now completely zoned. So I'm confused as to why a text amendment for the NAC would be helpful since, it's best I understand, it's, that, that node is now already developed and ground, ground is about to be broken on the rest of the development. We've approved landscape plans. I understand that bulldozers will be there any day, so, um, I think here, rather than presenting testimony, I'm asking questions, but I had three minutes, so here I am.
Okay, uh, Gaunt, you wanna see if you can straighten this out for us?
Well, maybe. Uh, I think she makes a good point on the text amendment if, if everything's already zoned and that, unless for some reason that doesn't develop or gets rezoned or something, so I think it's valuable in that sense. It may not kick in for a lot of years, but it can't hurt to have it, I guess, uh, looking at that. And do you have any comments you wanna make on that, Jason, or does that cover it?
I think that covers it, sir.
Okay, and with regard to, you know, what was taken out, uh, there was a little piece of land in the map in the book that was going to be included in the NAC that was currently in low-density residential, and, uh, there had been an error and somebody thought it had been rezoned to... And there had been an error and somebody thought it had been rezoned to a commercial zoning classification, and it hadn't been. So the revised map pulls that back out and will put it, that into the medium-density residential. Thereby, we're not expanding the NAC at all. In fact, we're actually making it a little bit smaller because if you go along White Boulevard, the portion at the back, we're moving that from Neighborhood Activity Center to medium-density residential. So I think it makes sense. We didn't, you know, I know there was a big concern initially when we got this and it looked like we were explaining, expanding the Neighborhood Activity Center, but the revised map takes care of that, I think. And I apologize, Robin, I didn't get that to you in advance. So with that, I think I'd like to make, well, wait a second. We never, we kind of skipped, we, we went out. I guess we can leave this one on the consent. We really should have pulled it and taken the testimony, but we kind of went that. So I guess whoever wants to make a motion for consent.
The text amendment, where did the text amendment come from? Did that come from our commissioner?
Yes, it did.
Okay, and what, when, when she presented that to you, what was her reasoning for the, adding the text amendment? Do you remember? Philip, come on up. Give us your name and, I know you were in the meeting, so maybe you can explain it.
Philip Westbrook, Community Development Planner. I can sort of explain the text amendment. Text amendment actually pertains to the NAC that has now been taken out. The, the NAC that you just explained, that was part of the whole situation there. The text amendment was written for that particular track. Now that, now that the NAC is being taken out and is being transferred to medium-density residential, the NAC, the text amendment, in my opinion, no longer need, is needed.
I don't think you do either, that.
Okay. Right.
So we have a corrected map. We don't really need the text amendment. And we can leave it on the consent agenda. Are we straight?
Although we're changing it so that, I don't know if that still qualifies as consent. Or should we do the other ones on consent? Okay, we can vote on them all together. That's true.
David, you want to weigh in?
Well, you, you can vote on them all together, but it would be the, with the changes to CP four-two.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we're leaving it then on what we're calling the consent agenda.
Right, but somebody needs to state exactly what the changes to CP four-two are. Because I wasn't sure I had.
When we get to that motion and statement, I'm going to ask Gault to. Right, and you can clarify that. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Approval, Board of Commissioners that they approve CP one-dash-one as presented, CP three-dash-one as presented, CP four-dash-one as presented with the modified text amendment, and CP four-dash-two with the revised map presented and deletion of the text amendment.
I think that'll do it. Make a note of that. Okay, hold on a second. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have discussion. Skip.
Okay, well, you just said with the deletion of the text amendment, there is no text amendment.
Well, it was proposed, so.
Yeah. It is.
Well, CP, CP four-dash-two doesn't, but it was presented here, so I could amend that to say without adding a text amendment.
I, I'd go with that. That makes me.
Gotcha, okay. David, does that make sense? Is that clear for you about the text amendment?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, he read it into the record, so with him saying deletion of it, it was acceptable that way. However, you all would prefer to write it up, actually. Okay, okay.
I'll instruct the clerk to call Judy when they get to that one. Okay, Judy was the second. The second's okay with the changes we mentioned. Okay, let's register our votes, please. Okay, that's what we'll do. Thank you very much. So that takes care of all the CPs, and we're going to move into the SPs. Jason, please.
Okay, we have two staff proposal items for consideration. First is SP one. It's located in Commission District One. It involves the Kroger grocery store located near the intersection of Macklin and Lost Mountain Roads. It includes that entire parcel. It's located currently in the Neighborhood Activity Center, Future Land Use category. Going to that item in my book. Proposed changes is to have it, to go to NAC, taking it out of low-density residential.
Anyone here for SP one? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. We have, we have one more. Skip, you have anything to add to that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so SP one, not objected to. Okay. Okay, Jason?
All right, and SP two is an update to the county's redevelopment inventory. This item involves the proposed removal of six properties from the list and the addition of one property. The items to be removed are as follows. Site 10, located at 2347 Canton Road. Site 11, located at 2410 Canton Road. Site 13, located at 2755 Canton Road. Site 25, located at 3101 Cobb Parkway. Site 28, located at 2900 Delk Road. And Site 37, located at 185 Veterans Memorial Highway. The proposed sites to add, or the proposed site singular to add, is Site 84, which is located at 3012 Canton Road. And just to be clear, the reasons for these proposed changes is the ones that are proposed for removal have converted or in the process of converting to viable uses, and the site to add is one that is now meeting the criteria of, of being included in the inventory.
This is really just a cleanup?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any comments on any of these? Can I get a motion to, well, let's see, do we have another SP?
No, sir, that was the last one.
So let's get a motion to approve both of these SPs from somebody?
Motion to approve SP one and SP two.
Okay. Second from Skip. Any further discussion?
Was, was there, did you ask for opposition on SP two?
Was anyone here wishing to speak to SP two? I'm sorry, I did not. But there's not, so see, I was okay. I'm psychic, I'm psychic that way.
And I don't think Judy's mic was on when she made the motion.
We, we have a motion to approve from Judy. We have a second from Skip. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Okay, so there we go, five zero. Jason, anything else for us? Any minutes to approve, Madam Clerk? Any further business? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We stand adjourned. We'll see you next time.
Good job.